Okay, let me try. Oh, it's not just me then. Okay. Catherine, Sarah, John, Andrew can you hear us?
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay. Last time Andrew helped me troubleshoot, but. All right, I am looking for some input. Shannon, do you have anything that could might help me figure this out?
We can hear you okay on our part.
You worked the magic last time. I don't know.
So this one is muted and that one is also muted.
Okay, which is this one that you're screen sharing from?
This is the master. That's when the meeting and I'm attending. Relieving, relieving your brain for bigger things.
We can, we can hear you.
Can you hear us online?
We can hear you online.
So Catherine, I'm gonna try to unmute you or actually can you say something?
Hello, can you hear us? No, I'm assuming you can't hear me.
We are clearing you in there right now.
I can hear you.
Are you the chair?
I, I am, yes. And Greg is the vice chair.
Thank you all for. My dad was on the.
I don't know. For now, I think the best course of action we can get started is for anyone online to just use the chat if they need to.
Okay, hopefully everyone on the line heard Shannon. We're working on the audio. If you can hear us, we'll get the meeting started. And if you reply by the chat, that would be appreciated. So we'll call this meeting to order, begin with a roll call. Maybe clockwise around the table, beginning with Greg.
Great human here. Bailey Payne, I'm a solid waste coordinator for community development.
Shannon Bush, we're the coordinator in CD and Pedro Sheets is present.
Ben Fulford, present.
Thank you. And I see Evelyn Lee, Andrew Struthers, Catherine Bisco was there a moment ago. And Sarah Cash. So we have a quorum. Only John Wilson is, is absent and he's fulfilling his duties as the Adair Village City Councilor this, this evening. Our first order of, of business and before I go into that, since this is a work session, is everyone comfortable if we use given names and not titles and surnames for this evening? Thank you. So the first order of business is the approval of the January 21st, 2025 planning commission meeting minutes. They were incorporated in the meeting packet that was sent out. Any comments, amendments, edits, changes to be proposed? I don't see anything coming in from our online participants. Anything from here in the room?
I move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a motion to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? See none? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by aye or online, please simply say yes in the message section.
Aye.
And we'll wait for.
Sarah, yes. Andrew, yes. Catherine, yes. Evelyn, yes.
Very well. We don't see Catherine's name across the top.
She's sort of hiding behind a little bit.
Okay, very, very good. So the meeting minutes have been approved unanimously. Well, maybe a couple of adjustments to our order of agenda to permit some of our guests to, to leave earlier rather than later. So why don't we go directly into the disposal site advisory committee update with, with Bailey? And we have your presentation in our packet if you'd like to refer to anything that's in the presentation.
Great.
I'm on the screen.
Back there maybe with the microphone. Well, thank you all for having me. For those of you online, thank you for being willing to be volunteered for Benton County. We rely on volunteers quite a bit. So thank you for your service. I've been asked to just give you a little history of the Coffin Butte landfill. So the areas, I'm sure you're all aware, was originally inhabited and still is by the Calipuians. For thousands of years in the early 1700s, European fur trappers came to the area in the 1800s pioneers. And then farming began in the early 1900s. Oh, it's a PDF.
It's a change. The PDF will display, but the PowerPoint won't. It's, it's small and shrunk on the screen, so I'm.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Well, in this slide, I should have put the pictures over the text because when it turns into a PDF, the picture. What was there, but.
Sorry, I have to screen share.
No problem. So in the 40s, Camp Adair was created. So that was when Coffin Butte first began to be used as a landfill or a dump back in the day.
So it was originally, originally military dump.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And then in the late 40s, I think it is, is when it began to be used by the city of Corvallis and other neighboring towns. Back then, the way that they managed solid waste was not very good. They would light a match at the end of the day and burn whatever came in. And away it would go. Probably not as many plastics back then in, in their garbage as we have today, but still not a good practice. Let's go ahead and go to the next one. So in the 60s, another one that I meant to mention is in the 60s is when there started to become a little bit more awareness about the way solid waste is managed and that it should be managed in a better way. So the 70s, that concern continued. DEQ began looking at the soil and water conditions around the landfill. And at the time recommended that the landfill close. In 72 and 73, there was a plan called the Shemeketa Plan, and this was to look at the kind of our Benton County and the other counties in our region to come up with a regional solution to solid waste. The Coffin Butte was sort of picked as the, the most logical place at the time. And but even back then, there were residents that were not in favor of having a landfill there.
So the, the term regional disposal site, that's come up in the newspaper, that's come up in kind of conversation. It doesn't appear that I saw in land use.
Oh.
So maybe Pedro can confirm that. I didn't see the term regional landfill appear in the code. So is there a definition for land use action of a regional landfill?
As far as land use.
Right.
I'm, I'm not positive. The term regional landfill is for landfills except 75,000 tons a year from outside of their immediate service area. I'm gonna get into that just a little bit. But if you're ready to answer.
Just fine, thanks.
In 1974, the planning commission approved a CUP allowing for the expansion. In 75, Valley Landfills purchased Coffin Butte. So that, as you look at the little documents, you might see it referred to as Valley Landfills. Still to this day, but that's just a placeholder for Coffin Butte.
And when was section 99 of the land use code written?
I don't know.
I, I'm sure there's a reference in our code for that, but I don't know that offhand as well.
I'm just wondering this chronology, where, where it occurred in this chronology.
Let me, while you continue Bailey, let me look at our development code to see if we have a reference for that.
Great. Also, if you get a chance to look at the Benton County tox trash, it's a pretty long document, but there is a section that's on specifically on land use. Yeah.
Any question? Page starts with the EQ recommending that it close. Do we know why it didn't?
I don't know why. At, at the time, I think, and this kind of gets to my next slide, actually. When the, and if you want, you can go ahead and advance it.
I seem to have lost my connection to the host.
Oh.
Hey, hang on.
There it goes. So in 1976, the Resource Conservation Recovery Act was passed, and this remains a real important law in solid waste. So prior to that, a lot of the dumps, and they were really dumps back then. If you call a landfill now a dump, that ruffles people's feathers because landfills now have a whole set of criteria that, that they have to have in place to be permitted through the DEQ. So when the RICRA, RICRA laws came in, that did away with a lot of the small, tiny little dumps. And they were, they were terrible. Sometimes people, you know, also like those on fire to reduce the volume. So they were often on the edges of creeks and rivers. So really just with no environmental protections. So with the passage of RICRA, then the landfills began being forced to have liners. And as time has gone on, now also ways to capture the landfill gas. And, you know, they have to use daily covers to prevent vectors and that kind of thing. No open burning, of course. So that was an important one. In the 80s, the Benton County altered the comp plan to create a landfill zone.
Oh, well, there's, there's the answer.
Okay. And that was done at, at the landfill's request. Planning Commission agrees to take waste intake from three additional counties. So that's when we became a regional landfill, if not a little before then. DEQ began looking into groundwater issues because of some chemicals that they received that they shouldn't have in the early 90s. 94, a CP was granted for the 2.2 megawatt power station. That, that's a picture of it right there. In 97, it was granted to expand that facility. And another notable thing that happened in 99, there was a large fire that was started from a spark or something that came from a load that was dropped off there.
Okay, I'm not sure where this is.
There it goes. Allied Waste bought Valley Landfills in 2000. And then in 2000 Benton County, the landfill franchise agreement was extended to 2020. In 2002, Benton County and the landfill owners signed an MOU requiring prior approval to use the land south of Coffin Butte Road for waste disposal. I'm sure, I don't know if you were on the planning commission at that time, but.
Before my time.
But. Let's see, then. In 2005, DEQ looked again, found that the site was in compliance with some groundwater concerns. They expanded the gas to energy facility and they've continued to add on monitoring and methane wells. And then in 2008, Republic Services bought it. In 2017, the incoming amount of waste really increased significantly, and we'll see that in a graph here in a minute. The burn dump began to be relocated. So part of, remember earlier, I was saying they'd light a match and walk, you know, and, and burn it down. Well, they had to excavate all that out because of, you know, there was no lining under it. So when they built the rest of the cells, they, they put in the lining system. Let's see, 2021, there's the big wildfires that, that also, you know, was a part of the cause of the, the amount increasing. Republic Services files a CUP in 2021 to expand over the Coffin Butte Road. And that was denied by the planning commission. This is just looking at kind of historically where we've been. The bottom one is looking at how many tons of material have been recovered. So that's everything that's recycled, composted, and in some kind of unusual cases burnt for energy recovery. So you can see that our, how much we've recovered has gone down a little bit in the last couple of years. Concerningly, if you go up to the orange bar, you can see that our disposal has increased as well. So we're recycling and composting less and we're throwing away more garbage. In fact, we're throwing away more than we ever have since we began keeping records in the early 90s.
Is that adjusted per capita or is that?
It is. Yeah. Good question. The dark blue line there, the third one up, that is our recovery rate. And so you can also see that that's taken a dip. The recovery rate is everything that's composted and recycled divided by everything that's by the total amount of the stuff. Yep. So that's, that's a concern too. We're, our recovery rates about as low as it's ever been since we began keeping records. The top one is the one that causes me the most concern and that's just, that's a, represents everything that we consume. And this is, yes, it's per capita. It also includes business waste. So that were, those graph lines are going in the wrong direction. And the reason that the top, the, the blue line causes me the most concern is because the, the vast majority of the environmental impacts that happen when you're talking about the things that we use every day happen at the point where, where those products are manufactured. So the natural resource extraction and the energy needed to turn them into products and ship them across the world and that kind of thing. So I would way rather see our recycling rate drop if it meant that our overall consumption was also dropping because that would be an environmental win. This is looking at, and gets to your question about a regional landfill. So it's defined, and this is DEQ definition, is 75,000 tons a year from outside the immediate area. We'll, we'll see where the landfills are located actually on the next slide. And so this graph shows the red boxes are ones that really aren't available to us. The number five is Riverbend in McMinnville that closed. 11 is the Covente, where we're a waste to energy facility, which is also closing. Eight is Short Mountain down in Eugene. They're, it's a privately, it's a publicly owned landfill. So the, the Lane County actually owns that landfill, so they can restrict because they don't want to fill it up. Like they see what's happening with Coffin Butte, right? So the blue ones, the blue boxes indicate where there are larger regional landfills. And what we're really looking at for most of Northwest Oregon in the long term, we're gonna have to start looking for other solutions, which for the Portland area, for the most part, most of their garbage goes up the gorge to that box number two. So that's something that Benton County is also gonna have to, to deal with.
So number three is in Washington?
Uh, yeah, that's Roosevelt landfill and it's owned by Republic Services. And that's part of why I kept it in there because it's republic. It's possible that that's where Benton County's garbage could go one day.
And the 2039 date on Coffin Butte is under the current cap assumption?
Correct.
Okay.
With that said, if the, if the expansion is approved, then that cap goes away. So it's, Sean McGuire, if you've had the chance to meet him, he calls it the Geppetto thing because you pull one string and there are gonna be impacts elsewhere.
And maybe we should pause Amanda and see if there's any questions from the online participants? Perfect, thank you.
This graph shows the amount of waste taken in by Coffin Butte each year. You can see in 2016, 17 is when there was a big increase. Again, that's attributable to the Riverbend landfill in McMinnville closing. And also at that time Marion County began sending about two thirds of their waste to Coffin Butte.
Question for that is, was that anticipated, that amount from those from Marion and McMinnville? Or did they surprise us with the amount that they brought?
I don't know. It's, yeah, it's a good question. I, I don't think that they should have been surprised. Yeah.
Switching now.
Yep. And, and also that, you know, you could anticipate that Riverbend was gonna close, for example. Yeah, and then wildfires are another issue that can bump up the numbers.
Bailey, back, back to that, that graphic. So did that put us in a really bad state going from, you know, 400, 450 to a million? As far as our longevity and whatnot? Do you really kind of, is that what everybody's concerned about right now? Is, oh geez, now we're, we're consuming way, way too much.
That's definitely a concern. Currently, there is the 1.1 million cap. You'll see there that they're slightly above the 1.1 million and that's, I won't bore you with the details, but it's, they're actually slightly under because there are certain types of waste that don't count towards those, those numbers. The, and the picture below it had an image of where the waste is coming from. So, you know, we get it from all over the place, but you can see those counties with the red and the orange are where most of it's coming from. But that kind of also speaks to the problem of Coffin Butte eventually filling up. And that's a big part of the SMMP work, Sustainable Materials Management Plan work that we're doing.
Well, we're not even, we're not even at the top.
Yeah, Benton County is about 10% of what Coffin Butte receives.
One interesting clarification is that Tillman-Pope, wait, it's Tillman-Pope and Yamhill. It's 100% and Benton and Lynn, it's 100% of their waste. So you look at the proportion, it's 100% of their waste, even though it only accounts for a smaller proportion of the total that goes to the Coffin Butte. Another interesting thing is that while there's only a subset of the total, a number of counties over a longer range, almost all the counties in the state have made a contribution, but if you wanna make the differentiation because it's where the source material for like a large construction project may have come from, that's where the statistic comes from. So say there's like a huge Deschutes County project with Hoffman or something like that, construction company, then you're gonna get a percentage blip statistically to Coffin Butte perhaps in one particular year, but that's kind of skews the statistics or the illustration over time. So it's, it's been interesting to try to explain that to the public.
Yeah. Yeah, in fact, most of the state would be blue, but collectively all of the blue, and that includes waste that comes from out of the state, is less than 1% in total. So the, the counties that really need to be paying attention to Coffin Butte's eventual closing are, you know, pretty much Lynn County West.
So you're obviously aware that there's a pending land use application, which is going to, to come in front of this group in, probably in March. And I think, I'll ask Petra, in terms of the other governmental agencies or testimony, can we have Bailey in that group? Because I imagine that many of us will have these types of questions more top of mind when we're reviewing the, the application.
In terms of just general history of.
I, I think both somewhat on, on general history. It may also be, I've forgotten, RCR, is, would you be the expert witness on RCRA? Or would someone else be, if the planning commission had questions on that?
I think that Bailey should be available to answer questions. I can't think of anything that would be inappropriate.
Okay.
But yeah, I just can't think of a scenario where it'd be inappropriate.
Yeah, I, I just imagine that some of us would, would have the kind of questions that would fall into this category and would not want to have a biased response or perceived biased response from the applicant. So I would be looking for who, who would be the expert that, that we could call upon during that section of the agenda.
Sure, and kind of some tangential information is the way that we're trying to think about how to address the extensive ex parte contact particularly that's been directed to the Board of Commissioners already since January 15th, that we need to be concerned about is, you know, this presentation has been socialized multiple times across the state at this point too. So we're going to probably go through a, a selection process and make sure that we have a lot of these types of information, including news articles that have gone around quite a bit and that type of thing in the record. So that, that we have all that information there and so that we can speak a little bit more comprehensively about it and reference on some of these things as well. So that we have those things at our fingertips like this PowerPoint slide, for example.
Okay. You finished your thought?
Yes.
Let's move to Catherine's question. And we still don't have audio for our, our folks on.
Catherine just unmuted yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Try and see.
Can, can you hear me? Hello?
Well, we're waiting on. There may be someone from DEQ also that if RICRA in particular, if you want somebody that really has more in depth. I imagine there's someone from DEQ that I could find.
Oh yeah, we already sent them a ball and chain in the mail. But yeah, it said absolutely, we need somebody there. And we've made requests for particular statements. And we've made requests for particular statements well in advance and are working that because there's an expectation around that as well. And our agency referral partners, we expect them to be in the room or online as well. And there's a representation of 10 to 12 state agencies that should be at your beck and call, as well as our environmental scientists that we've hired. And MFA is our primary environmental engineer. They have a pretty substantial deep firm that are going to be doing an objective review of civil engineering, odor, general noise, environmental, and perhaps natural or cultural impacts as well. Depends on what kind of feedback we get from the state agencies.
And can we publish that list of experts to the planning commission ahead of the hearing?
Yes, it will all be in the record.
In the record?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So they will all get letters, all their comments will be synthesized, and they'll also be represented verbatim in the staff report.
Okay.
I don't know if this would be helpful to the group or if it's even allowed, but we have the community concerns report that we do each year. So if that's appropriate, I could send those to you and you could share those with the group. That's a record of all the complaints or concerns that people have about the site.
Yeah, let's talk about the most appropriate way of getting that into the record. Maybe it's maybe it's a DSAC, maybe DSAC actually formally submits it to the record when the public comment period opens. That's probably the best way to do that.
Gotcha.
But I think we would, as a planning commission, make a request of Bailey and his what's your acronym on your committee at this point?
Uh, DSAC.
DSAC. We would probably make a request of an opinion to be submitted into the record. And through that opinion, some of that could also come into the record.
Catherine's question came through. She says, I'd like to ask Bailey to speak to the waste materials that do not count to the cap limits.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
And the second part too, will the BCTT final report be submitted as part of the contract?
No to the second question. The did you say SMMP?
Uh, BCTT.
Okay. I don't see why it wouldn't or couldn't be because that report's already published. So I would think so. And then to the first question, it's things like contaminated soils, rock, asbestos, sludge, what else? Alternative daily cover, which is things that they'll use to cover the garbage each day, which could include or previously included ash from the Covanta ReWorld facility in Salem. Those are some examples.
And what is the theory as to why those don't count on the because they they sound like they are waste?
Yeah, I I don't know why those originally got excluded. It might be because they're generally, I mean, I just said asbestos, but they tend to be things that are inert and so they're not.
Contaminated soil doesn't sound.
Well, that's true, yeah, but it's within the line thing. So, yeah. Yeah, I don't I don't know. Also, industry doesn't count towards those numbers. So if HUGS, I forget what it's called now, Evanite, the the big place over there, or HP, say, if part of their manufacturing had a specific subsection of waste, because that comes from an industrial process, then it wouldn't count towards the amount of waste that we generate.
Catherine has a follow up comment. I see why alternative daily cover may not count, but why not the other materials in particular contaminated soils which might be sizable volumes?
Yeah, I don't know. Well, I've got some homework now.
I have a question, or maybe it's an observation that Bailey, you're found the last few slides the most interesting and really reveal sort of perspective I have, which is some very much outside the purview of the of the planning commission, but nonetheless, something you think about clearly. Land use decisions are made at the county level, but the issue is clearly a state issue.
Yeah.
And the question is, how do we manage that? What do we, you know? It just seems if we're environmentally concerned, you know, looking at, you know, the mole in one hole, that moves the mole to another hole may not be a great strategy. And so I just, how do you think about that? And is that DEQ's issue? Or how does that, you know, if we want our decisions to be environmentally informed, how does that play into it or doesn't it?
The DEQ has a plan called their 2050 vision. And it's really focused on upstream, trying to reduce waste in the first place. An example of that is with the Recycling Modernization Act that is about to come online in July. One of the pieces of the many pieces that they put into that is that if you're a manufacturer of, say you're Pepsi, and you can show that you can make your Pepsi bottles with less plastic, then that will lessen the amount that that business has to pay into the Recycling Modernization Act. They call it eco-modulation. Or likewise, if there's a manufacturer that had something in a glass container, say, and they could make the case that it would be a better environmental choice to be some other material, and they switch to that, then that lessens the fee. So it's it's trying to look upstream with the current sustainability Sustainable Materials Management Plan that we're working on. That's that's really the focus of this group too, is to look upstream. An example of that is Portland passed ordinances on that you have to deconstruct homes instead of instead of just demolish them and take them off to a landfill. Homes that are older than, I forget, 1945 or something. And so by putting that in place, it reduces a lot of construction demolition material, which is 15% or so of the overall waste stream. They're able to to address it systematically by looking upstream. So that's the intent of the work that's coming out of this group.
And can you give us an outline of the kind of the milestones that SMMP has? When's the first report going to be and what is that report going to to answer and so forth?
We're Benton County hired a consultant to help us with this. And we've we've had a couple of meetings of the whole group, but now we're really starting to get into the work. So we've created four subcommittees. One's going to focus on food and organics in general. And again, with an eye towards looking upstream, how do we get more food to hungry people or to animals or to compost, but definitely not in the landfill because that's the biggest contributor to the methane issues and smells. Another is going to be on the built environment, so, you know, construction demolition type projects. Third one is going to be kind of a catchall, looking at materials that aren't already that don't already have a program in place, such as paint and medicines and electronics and a number of others. But to look at, you know, what are what are some other projects or products that maybe we could avert from going to the landfill? Furniture, textiles, might be a couple of the things that they're looking at. And then the fourth group is looking at the regional waste as a system and how can we build systems that are going to help us down the road when Coffin Butte closes? And that's made up.
Timeline?
It's the work needs to be completed by the end of June. So then we'll have a report at that point. And then that's that'll be the idea is it'll hopefully be the springboard to action.
Thank you. Be mindful of of time. Let's just make a check on the online folks to see if there's any questions or else we'll try to wrap this. Okay, thank you very much for coming in, Bailey. Appreciate it. And we'll look forward to your participation in the the application, the land use application.
Sounds good. I'll be happy to be here.
Let's make another real time adjustment to the to the schedule and pull Shannon's Q and A session from the the session that I think almost all of us were at on January 30th. So Shannon.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to have to do a fair amount of screen sharing, Amanda, in addition to passing out materials just so we can get.
Which one would you like me to do?
I'm happy to do it. I'll just take over the screen share. It's probably easier.
Okay.
The question is, will I be able to? Yes, okay. So folks online, hang tight one second. I got to do paper handouts first. Yeah, or or miss passing. Yeah, there you go. Great.
Do you have a couple to go in different directions?
I'm going to do one at a time for not being too confusing here. Yeah, it's all just one document. I was obviously made too many copies for assuming the folks were going to be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And for the folks online, do they do they have this electronically?
Yep, we emailed it to you all a little bit earlier. And I'm about to screen share the same documents that we are looking at in person.
Yeah.
So that one is labeled attachment A. So what I just I want to just kind of do like a high level overview, like a little review of kind of how we got to where we are. And I think it's just helpful reminder because we talk about this fairly infrequently. Okay, so the first document that you all have is our DLCD Technical Advisory TA Grant. So that is the one that enabled us to have $50,000 to do this project work. I'm really just sharing this with you and for the folks who are looking on paper, it starts here on page, I think, nine or so. That's just because that for those first several pages are just kind of jargon, you know, it's legalese speak. I just wanted you all to have a copy of this because, you know, we've received a lot of questions about just trying to understand the process and the project and where you're at. So if you have interest in reading through that DLCD TA grant, feel free. If you don't care, don't. But just kind of in the transparency interest, you have it and you can look through. So that DLCD grant is basically what first dictates how this project is going to work, what we're going to do, all of that. Following that grant execution, which so it is an executed contract, we then move to the next document here that I'm going to give you. This is for paper viewers here, has attachment B at the top. So this is our signed contract with Cascadia Partners. So this is the work that we're doing right now. We're kind of in the last couple of months of this. This is all the legalese, so folks online, this is nothing enough content that you really need to pay attention to until we get to here. So if you want to walk through kind of the more in-depth, step-by-step outline of the work that we're doing here in this comp plan, I would say this is the best place to look. So we've shown you bits and pieces along the way, kind of in an interest in not overwhelming you with information. But given the questions that we've received, I'm kind of of the mind now that I might as well just give you everything to to fully, you know, get your head wrapped around the sequencing and the why and the how. So right now we are at step 3.1 or 2, I think. Okay, so this is what we just did last week, CPAG meeting, one drivers of change. That was our discussion last week. We are now kind of leading up to this next 2.4, designing of this public workshop piece, which is bringing us to our next item of discussion. Again, if you don't want to read this, you don't have to, but if you want to know the ins and outs and nitty gritty, that's where you can find it. Okay, so this is our inclusive outreach plan. I'm realizing I can just give you three instead of passing around that huge stack. Here you go. So the inclusive outreach plan, Greg and Andrew have already looked through this, so this shouldn't look terribly different to the two of you. And we've kind of worked together with our consultant team on this, and we pull that up now too. So that is this document right here. Okay, so this is what Cascadia has helped us to put together in terms of being kind of designing the thoughtful approach to our outreach in the comprehensive plan. Some of the things that I would suggest that you take a look at are things like the goals and guiding principles of, you know, like, how do we do effective and good communication with the with the public? So that's kind of where you're going to find things like key messages and the channels to be used. So that's the purpose of this document is kind of giving us a outline of things to be sure that we cover that we don't forget about. So we have a goal statement here, a series of goals, series of guiding principles in in kind of our outreach methodology. That's that's what this document has. A lot of this is going to actually get woven into the website that is currently under construction. Because I mentioned website, I'll give you a quick update on that. The website, we just got it kind of in the background, available for creation and design editing as of yesterday. So that's really good news. We now have a separate consulting group that I'm working with pretty closely and pulling all of this kind of content together. So those key messages, for example, that you see in this IOP for short, will become a series of things that you might like hover over, you know, so like FAQs, you know, that's a lot of this in this IOP is going to get copied into the website content. So this is basically, you know, I would say this document is always going to be a draft form, kind of a draft working document, it's maybe never really like truly final because it's going to be relevant for the life of the project, which is, I'm going to say, three to five years. So like while we've, you know, kind of put this aside for now, you have comments and commentary on or questions on it, it's not, it's never too late to go back and edit. So when we get to these hard-to-reach maps, I'm going to talk about these very specifically. And Amanda, please help me know that questions come up online as we go. So I did have the consultant revise these maps for two purposes. I don't know that it necessarily addresses everything because I was not in the meeting when we talked about this last, I think, in November. But what I want to draw your attention to, these revised maps I'm passing out now, and they are in your email that I attached. So it's these PNGs. I think a couple of just like talking points for them. The little dividing areas are census tracts. So that's where you see, you know, like, I think number 15 basically is, that is a census tract, it's like how it's labeled, and you'll see LC down just below to the south. So they've added in all of the kind of like communities and CDPs essentially, census designated places. So you can visually see where Monroe, Alpine, Belle Fountain, et cetera, are on these hard-to-reach The purpose of these hard-to-reach maps is to identify where we want to strategically more, you know, more likely to not focus our attention and resources. So it's saying to us, we know that based on historical census data in terms of who responds to the American Community Survey, for example, that, I think that's this one labeled history. Pull this up. So more vulnerable, I think vulnerable is maybe not the best term to use here, but it's basically lower response rate in that instance. So that kind of tells us if that area that's shown in the darker blue is more vulnerable, I would say pay more attention to me is kind of what it's telling us. We want to focus probably a little bit more of our outreach resources and efforts to that area in a way that's maybe not exactly the same way as surveying online because we know that these people in these areas tend to not respond to the American Community Survey, for whatever reason. Why that is, who knows? tend to not respond to the American Community Survey for whatever reason. Why that is, who knows? But it's telling us kind of the best use of our resources and how to, how to focus our resources a little bit more strategically.
The added descriptor was very helpful.
Isn't that better than what I did a couple of months ago?
Yeah, before it made no sense to me. The time I saw it, I went, oh, okay.
So it's clicking now. Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you Shannon. And I can stop there because I know that there were a lot of questions on these hard to reach, um, analysis maps. I'm happy to, uh, for in the room or on the chat, any chat questions coming up? Okay. I also asked them to show specifically, or they kept going back and forth with the color scheme, you know, so sometimes dark meant more vulnerable, sometimes dark meant less, which my brain gets kind of wonky at that point. So I did ask them to make them, comparable across the board in terms of the symbology coloring and yeah, so hopefully that makes sense now. Again, we can return to it to talk further, but basically if it's a darker color, it means pay attention to me. We probably need to make some special effort. Yeah. Okay, cool. So, um, another kind of deliverable that the planning commission, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan subcommittee has already seen, is not new, is the Excel document. Thank you for getting your steps in tonight.
I've never seen it this big before.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice and big so we can hopefully all read it. Exactly. So pull it up for those of you online. So we asked Cascadia to give us a basically a la carte menu of options of how we might be able to do outreach in ways that are outside of the norm, you know, so they're still going to be not earth shattering and different, but, um, the intention is to show you what is a high resource sort of effort versus, well, I should start, what's the lowest resource effort that we can sort of capitalize on versus like a medium resource. And by that I mean staff time and just kind of the ability to pull it off as a group of humans, up to, um, higher resource thing. So this is just kind of the menu of options that we could choose to pull from in terms of doing our outreach. So you don't need to do anything with this in this meeting other than know that I've given it to you. And I have a homework, I have two basic homework questions for you that we're going to talk through tonight. I'm going to pull up, um, on the screen as well. Okay. Just trying to think of, yeah. Okay. I'm going to do one more handout and then we're going to talk through the last one. Then we'll talk through the kind of the questions for the group here. All right. So this visual is, I would say, focus your eyes first on the black outlines. Those black outlines should hopefully look a little bit familiar to you now because those are census tracts. They align exactly with those, um, maps that we just looked at with a hard to reach analysis. So census tracts are very common data measure when we're talking about, uh, community data because, um, they don't vary, you know? So it's also like in this kind of geographic context, it's the most relevant, I would say, in terms of our population base. So when you have really big cities, you go down to a finer level of detail. You, you would use like census blocks or, um, census block groups. That's too fine of a detail in this, in this kind of context, it's, it's almost not useful. So census, census tracts are about the right sort of level of detail for us to use, I think, in this context of trying to do data analysis. So these black boundary outlines are showing the census tracts in Benton County. And then, then kind of avert your eyes to the colored blocks. Those also probably look familiar to you. They're the CACs. So the different colored blocks are, um, defined community advisory committees or previously known as, also still known as citizen advisory committees. The hope is that you can basically align these pretty closely. And the reason I have them overlaid is for that reason to kind of show you that they, they align not perfectly, but pretty closely. I would prefer that they were perfect alignment, but can you do? What we are kind of proposing to do, and this is where we're going to start now, talking about not so much the documents of what we've accomplished, but next steps going forward. So we are going to be kind of embarking on this next step soon in the next couple of weeks. We've got to set this up and then we've got to execute. We have to determine what role planning commissioners are going to be able to play in helping execute this outreach work. I kind of like the term that Petra had mentioned earlier ambassadors. I think that's like a really good way to think about the type of, um, outreach and sort of role we're asking planning commissioners to help us, much in the same way that the CPAG attendees are, to just get the word out there to your networks, to your, you know, however you want to define that, that the county is doing this project and we need you to show up at this meeting or to respond to this survey or, you know, fill in the blank type of, um, outreach activity. So how do we do that? You know, how do we sort of strategically divide the county for purposes of doing, um, in-person meetings, I think is like our first task. I think, and my kind of proposal to the planning commission is to think about it in terms of the CACs. One is already active, as we know, the others are not. But I think the benefit of aligning with the existing CAC boundaries is over time, as this project grows, if, you know, tensions arise and have issues, we have the option of using, basically reactivating a CAC if needed to form and well, to serve as a sort of conduit of information sharing and gathering and, um, sort of community effort. So I think the census tracts align close enough with our, um, existing CAC boundaries to be able to, to utilize it in that way. So to talk through a little bit about like why that matters, as we get into this project into phase two and you're starting to do data analysis on things like population, demographics, um, housing, transportation needs, et cetera, you, you have to define some sort of, um, level of analysis. Using those census, census tracts becomes a way that we can go to the communities, like the CAC areas and say, in this area, you know, but what do we mean by area? So it's going to be by census tracts. That's kind of like going to be the underlying, um, measure or geography that's used to assess and analyze the data that we're looking at. So that's kind of why you kind of have to set it up from the beginning to, to know how you're going to be, um, pulling data and then analyzing it and showing it publicly. Cause if we talk solely about Benton County as a whole, you can see how problems start to arise, you know, like there's, there's some variability between South Benton and Northwest Benton or et cetera. So that's kind of the, the proposal that I would make in terms of how we do our data analysis in our outreach. So thinking about that, I will pull up the, the sheet where we have our, our two homework questions, which you all cannot read at all. I'll read them aloud for you. The, the two sort of homework questions for the planning commission, it's not necessarily to answer right now, but to ponder and get back to me within a week, I think is reasonable. So thinking about this map with the CACs, who wants to, who can, will, is best suited to serve as an ambassador for each of those CACs? And that's going to be likely kind of like wherever you live and that your kind of network exists, but I don't want to make assumptions. So bringing the question to you all to, to ponder and get back to me on.
And maybe reiterate what an ambassador responsibilities are.
Yeah, I think it's going to be just primarily, um, serving as that conduit for saying this meeting. So first and foremost, we are going to be having at least one in-person meeting in this phase. So I know this is weird because this is how county employees think because of budget purposes, but I think solely right now in terms of up until June 30th, because that's when our budget funding for this project runs out. After that, it's a kind of, kind of a different thing, right? But for this outreach phase right now, the ambassador is going to be helping us to get the word out about that at least one in-person meeting that's going to happen at each of these CACs. I think we could also like potentially combine one or two, if it makes sense, and that's up to you all. Helping to share the fact that we're going to have like a survey when it's, that the website is going to be up. So it's kind of like using your networking, um, your existing network and whatever way that you can, um, to help us get project interest and response from the public. I think also it's going to of course be attending those meetings and, um, yeah, being present to, to help be like the face of the project as a planning commissioner. Does that seem reasonable? I mean, this is also, it's not written in stone, you know, so it's, we're kind of trying to figure out what is the right way to, to, to make this all work. I think it'll be very difficult if we try to, to send each of you out to separately do this on your own and then to have to report back. And yeah, it's kind of, yeah, that's kind of my, my thought too. So I think we have two or three staff members who will be like the primary facilitator at those meetings. And then your job, we're asking you to just help us get people there, um, and help us, you know, field questions or, or whatever comes up.
And to give the outsiders a little softer landing if possible, because you know the community a little bit better.
Yeah. Very true. Yeah. Does that answer the question as far as, okay.
And I'd suggest that perhaps given our inability to have an interactive discussion, what if you were to send an email out to the, uh, the, the, the planning commission with a specific ask and a specific request for a response?
That's what this is. It's, that went out to them earlier today.
Oh, it did? Okay. I haven't seen it. So.
Yeah, no, it was about 15 minutes before. So you would, it's in your inbox.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So these are, this is what everybody has already, hopefully those online are looking at this right now. But yeah, this is in each of your inboxes at present. So the homework questions that I'm asking you is who do you want to be? Which of those CACs do you want to be an ambassador for? I think you can have more than one and like ambassador per area, because again, more people that show up, the better. I don't know if we need to come to a conclusion on this tonight, but for example, one scenario I could see happening is like the Northwest Benton and the REN, CACs could possibly be consolidated into like one meeting. So it's, it's kind of a, a population based question and I'll leave that to you all to tell me like, no, that's a terrible idea. Um, they should be separate. But, uh, so yeah, that, that is the part one question, like is basically get back to me and let me know what area you would be representing. And it looks like Catherine has a question.
Catherine has a question. Is this a good time to reestablish the CACs or is there no plan to pursue that at this time?
I'm going to be, I'm going to defer to Petra on this.
Yeah, no, I can speak to that. So the way that they were set up via ordinance is, is that they, it's self-selection process. And so if they don't have, if they're not incentivized or if they're not motivated, um, it's, it's hard to stand them up. LC's been extremely motivated and that's really the only way it can work. Um, South Benton County has shown some interest, especially around the South, um, Corvallis area management plan. And so we are, we are finding, looking for some resources in the next biennium to help them with that. But it's also fairly staff intensive. So at the same time, uh, we also need to identify staff resources, uh, for that, which we have. So, um, based on the demand, yes, um, we're able to do that, but certainly not all at the same time.
And Catherine, the second part to your question, will these outreach events be both virtual and in-person accessible?
Love that question, Catherine. You are, uh, basically hitting number two, which is what I'm about to get to on our, our, our part two of your homework. So I'll just read it aloud because I think for those in the room, it's too small. So I'm asking you to please read the inclusive outreach plan. So Greg and Andrew have already looked through this. It's not particularly new or different from the edits we made, but for the rest of the commission, please take a look at that document in particular and the document, it's an Excel spreadsheet titled PC-led engagement activity table. That's this one. So that's the a la carte menu of what your kind of options are. And then here's the kind of prompt. So in addition to a traditional in-person public meeting, you know, just exactly what you would imagine. You show up at some either civic building or a school or some, some sort of meeting and the project website tools that we are, that are currently in development right now. I'm asking you all to advise on any additional outreach mechanisms that you feel will be most effective to use in your, that geographic area and among the population that you'll be ambassadoring, if that's a word, ambassadoring, for this project going forward in phase one and two. So I've given you a little bit more detail in terms of like what I mean here, because that might be confusing. So consider this both from the perspective of informing, like informing the public that something's happening, as well as getting feedback on those drivers of change. Cause remember this next meeting we have coming up is going to be socializing those drivers of change that the CPAG has already started to assemble. So we need to first find one or two local, like kind of hyper local strategies to let people know this is happening, number one, and also to gauge and garner feedback and response. So I'm basically saying, we already know we're going to do a public meeting based on these CACs. We already know we're going to have project website tools that are going to kind of replicate that same, same types of questions likely via a survey. But is there something else that would be, that you know of for your area? And I'll, I'll use like LC as a really good example. I think LC has a community newsletter. Um, so if your area that you kind of are representing has specific tools that are already in existence, we want to capitalize on that. You know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to use what people are already accustomed to. So I'm giving you an example here. Like what are the best ways to inform your community members? And what are of the fact that an event or something is happening, the project is happening? And what are the best ways to gauge and receive feedback from them? So those are kind of the, the homework questions that I'm asking you to, um, respond back to me within probably about a week or so. As you can imagine, it's a lot to pull off in terms of coordination of getting public meetings set, finding space. Just the advertisement alone is tricky. So we'll use all of our usual channels. We have, you know, our PIO has all the basic stuff kind of covered. So advertising online via our social media channels, for example, that's, that's kind of a, a given. But anything that's like hyper local to your area that, um, you, you want to say like, don't forget to use this thing. That's what most people are going to be looking for.
Shannon, Catherine has another comment. Yeah. Will we have access to print flyers announcing these events for hosting at local venues? Maybe a better homework question, but more resource-minded inquiry. Thanks.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I guess I would just respond with a question if you're, if you're, if you're printing flyers, I imagine flyers are going to be going up at like businesses, for example. So you're, you, you probably have a finite number of flyers. If it's something like, let's say less than, and also they would be specific to your geographic area. So we don't want to like inundate county wide. Would confuse people. So yeah, if like each, I think if each, um, kind of CAC geography wanted to print 20 flyers, sure, that's not a problem. If we're talking a thousand, that's a different story. Um, but yeah, I think within reason, that's very doable to do some, some print materials. And I think it just, you know, runs into questions about, uh, what size and, you know, if it's just a standard eight and a half by 11 or 11 by 17, no big deal.
Shannon?
Yeah.
Question. So like Corvallis, for example, I know there's a couple of us representing.
Yeah.
Do you see us harboring and being at all these sessions or would you split up Corvallis in a couple of halves? That'd be one question. The other thing is, is if we start engaging folks via social media postings, restaurants, whatever, is there a mechanism to understand, um, the counts? Cause you need to get a public form that's too small or too big.
Oh, really good questions. Wow. Okay. So, um, I think as far as, always your second question first. Like what's defining the appropriate space? I think it's going to depend a lot on the geography that we're talking about, you know, so, um, usually you want to opt for a larger space just in case. There are downsides to that if not enough people show, but using space like at a school is often ideal. Like a gymnasium or a cafeteria, something like that. Uh, it depends a lot on just what you are, the media that you're going to use for it, you know, and making sure you have like the appropriate tech available, library. So in short, how do we gauge the number of participants? I wish there were a better way to do it, but it's always a bit of a crap shoot. In my experience, often not a ton of people tend to show up for that, but we might be surprised. We would be really happily surprised and we do have a really good turnout. So I think, partially I would say we So I think partially, I would say we almost have to rely on you all a little bit as ambassadors to gauge that interest a little bit and be like, yeah, I've actually heard from a lot of people that, you know, they're bringing their whole neighborhood association or whatever, something like that. If we end up not having enough space, I think we could always think about, do we do a second one, you know, to accommodate further their logistical challenges without? But yeah, that is, it is definitely one of the.
Be careful about how much you generate enthusiasm or kind of watch it and try to understand how much you're generating.
With like attending at a public meeting?
Yeah. Because Corvallis, I mean, 60,000 people.
Yeah.
I know even on the best of things, the, the thing that we attended the other night, I think it was like 50 or 60.
Yeah, so, okay. Well, so then if we're talking about Corvallis specifically, I'll move to your other question. So this is where this gets very complicated. It came up at the CPAG the other day and I'm going to do my best to talk through this, but I might fail. So let's see. Did you answer something? Oh, okay. She's wishing me luck. So a Benton County Comprehensive Plan is going to be geared toward planning for the unincorporated.
Outside.
Yes, right. That is the primary focus because it's a jur, it's a question of jurisdiction, you know?
They got their own comp plan, right?
Yeah, we have our, so Benton County has its own development code, which is like what dictates zoning stuff. And we have our own comprehensive plan. As you all know here, the city of Corvallis also has their own comprehensive plan, their own code. So, so a lot of this is like the nuance of jurisdiction. Philomath also has, is its own incorporated city, Adair Monroe. One of my missings, it's North Albany.
North Albany.
Yeah. So when we, we talk about Corvallis, we have to be, as far as outreach, we do have to be conscientious about what we're asking of City of Corvallis residents. I think is the best way I can talk about this. I will say that this is open for dialogue because there is no clear, clean answer to it. I think it's very possible that there are City of Corvallis residents who have interest in what's going on in Benton County, but arguably maybe don't have the same stake sort of in Benton County's Comprehensive Plan update. Typically, we wouldn't really do outreach in the same sense to invite City of Corvallis residents to a county comprehensive planning exercise because they have, because it's going to confuse things, right? Like they have their own, again, they have their own, so.
We saw it the other day in the first session, people were like, hold it.
Yes.
Corvallis or?
The geography and the jurisdictional stuff definitely becomes very complicated. So yeah, what would, what should we do here?
Yeah, should we put that piece on hold and really focus on the county outside of city and say this city is out of scope? Because you're right, there's going to be a ton of confusion.
Yeah. Yeah, and because the majority of the population lives in Corvallis. So it, it's definitely complicated to try to, to message correctly.
I don't know if you can do it in a clean way.
There might be an opportunity to collaborate with the city on, on outreach strategy. Also, their Comprehensive Plan isn't very old. And like we've been talking about is that we're going to have like an annex or a chapter that acknowledges their respective plans and everybody's, you know, it's on a cyclical basis to on what their planning horizons are. So some folks are kind of ahead of where we're at and some behind. So they'll be an acknowledgement of, and we still need to meet consistency with, right? And like you said, it is complicated because, for example, when we talk about service, providing services, the county, particularly in health services, provides most of the health services for the city of Corvallis. So you would want the City of Corvallis residents to be providing feedback on health services and health service related things and health services. And right now, actually, that's where our housing staff works right now for Benton County. So I mean, and those, some of those things, I think that that's exactly what we're going to be doing is like doing a nuanced approach where let's, let's focus some of the themes, like coming out of these change, the change.
Drivers of change.
Yes. And being able to, to identify those for Corvallis and then we can be, we can focus on those for Corvallis, the things that are going to hold the most weight and overlap between the City of Corvallis and Benton County.
Okay.
Yeah. I feel like the, I talked with Sarah about this a little bit the other day or last week because Sarah also asked a really good question about how does the CAC, the LC, sorry, is it South Benton? No, the, yeah, the LCCAC. How does the work of that CAC play into all of this too? And I think like the simplest way I can talk about it and explain it is its coordination. You know, it's like kind of a constant game of coordination of what is the LCCAC doing? What does the Corvallis Comprehensive Plan say about land in the northern section of, you know, what does their future land use map look like? What does that mean for us in our Comprehensive Plan in terms of coordination of that? The efforts that we're all trying to do, planning somewhat separately and individually, we have to be like pulled together in this Comprehensive Plan document because it is the overarching one, is the, the sort of like, takes it all into account. So it's, yeah, I don't know if that's a perfect way to explain or respond to your question. I don't really know if I answered it per se, but I think as far as utilizing our resources wisely, I think we want to focus probably more on the unincorporated Benton County areas that are not represented elsewhere, you know? Because the City of Corvallis, Philomath, et cetera, they have, they do have their own representation in terms of it's their own jurisdiction, they're incorporated, they have their, their mechanisms in place, you know? Yeah.
I'm going to interrupt with a, first a question from Sarah and then another comment from Catherine. So Sarah is asking what's the timeline, what's the timeline is for the completion of this part of the project?
Sarah, I, I think you're asking about, oh, sorry. If you're asking about responding to these couple of homework questions, it's by next week. If you're asking about the series of outreach meetings, it's basically, we need to have them done before we move to the one document that is around here somewhere. If you look at the Cascadia contract, we are at, so we just completed 2.4 last week, the Critical Drivers Public Workshop. We are now going to be doing, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. We just completed 2.3 CPAG Meeting 1 Drivers of Change. We will be working on 2.4, the public workshop. It needs to be done pretty much by the time we have our CPAG Number Two, Robust Strategies, which is scheduled for March. I don't remember the exact date in March, but basically we want to be getting this underway and happening in the next couple of weeks. I think we said end of March is when our, is our projected timeline for the robust strategies. So let's say between, by the middle of March, if that's like a, a target date, pretty quick. Yeah, yep.
And I can add on just from our conversation last night at LCCAC too, Sarah, is Corvallis is implementing their comp plan right now. They're not going to stop for this process, just like we're not expecting LC to stop because you've done a lot of your preliminary work in LC as well and you have your list of priorities and have gone through a lot of this preliminary work as well. So when you're ready now, LC community, you start working on the economic analysis and the buildable lands inventory. And there's nothing to stop LC from moving forward in that process or for the comp plan policy conversation to hold up LC in any way of that. Nor should this process hold up any community for what they're working on. It's really just a culmination of what's going on and making sure that there's consistency and a consistent vision for the community at large moving forward for the board to consider.
Catherine had a comment. Curious how to, how to avoid exclusion of city residents from the, like, state county jurisdiction experience. They have outside city limits. They may live in city limits, but drive through county lands, on county roads, possibly work in county recreated, et cetera. So perhaps their feedback is as important to solicit feedback even through city residents. Could be a loss to limit or prioritize county only participation. And are the committed meetings expected to be during the daytime hours like the last one or evening?
Okay, so for item number one, first question, I wouldn't characterize it as excluding. I think what's really important to understand is that we have limited resources. We have limited resources to accomplish outreach and outreach in like a, a public for, like a public meeting format is much more costly to accomplish. So we have finite resources and a large county to accommodate. As far as city residents go, I think my thought process, and you know, this is where we can all have dialogue and feedback. Most people in the county, I'm sorry, in the City of Corvallis have generally better access to computer-based technology to respond to a survey, for example. So I think it's first, first of all, remember that we are talking only about this first subset of meetings for outreach. It's not project-wide. We don't even have funding for part two of this project yet, so we're not focused only until June 30th of this year. In this phase where we have like finite resources to do this outreach, how do we propose the best use of those funds? My proposal and pushback, but is to prioritize more rural Benton County that does not have representation otherwise. It doesn't mean that people in the city cannot take a survey or cannot access the website and have the same engagement electronically. We're just not going to hold a meeting per se in central, you know, in the downtown and in city hall, I guess. Because I do think that's where we run into a lot of confusion about, but I just, I thought you're comp plan. And you know, and then they're confused because they're city residents and they're not understanding the difference between the city and the county comp plan. People more rurally in the county are probably going to follow that distinction a little bit more than the city residents who are expecting city stuff. So pushback on that, you know, like again, there's no perfect way to do this. I think we are going to run into challenges no matter what. I think that is, that is a given. If city residents, again, have interest though, even Philomath, any, any city resident absolutely has a voice in this. We just can't prioritize resources in the same way for other jurisdictions essentially, smaller jurisdictions, like unincorporated cities that we kind of have to for the more rural areas. I don't know. Feedback, please, thoughts.
So you're thinking mostly during the day, like your meeting was the other day because of staff resources can actually support it in a better fashion?
Oh, I didn't really address that second question yet. Usually public meetings are at night. That is common. That's, you know, kind of like this right now. There are also drawbacks to that. We will definitely have challenges with whatever scenario we pick. There are challenges with weekend meetings. No perfect solution, but yeah, it's usually night meetings, Monday through Friday.
So you stay at camp?
Yeah, something like that. Yep. In a perfect world with more resources, you usually do them two different nights. So if, you know, somebody like a Tuesday night and a Thursday or something like that. But again, finite resources, we have to figure out how to best use our time and money that we have available most effectively.
Sarah has another question. Is the online survey ready for residents to access and submit?
It is not, Sarah. It is, so that was that project website update that I just gave. We just got the, the website up and going by IT and our consultant yesterday. So it is in the works. As far as kind of a launch for that, I would say the next, oh God, don't quote me on this, but two weeks maybe. It depends on, you know, how, how quickly we can, our consultants can work to put it all together and do a little bit of, we want to do a little bit of beta testing first before we just launch it and say, here you go, people. To make sure that, you know, it's functional. But I will absolutely keep you all apprised when that is up and running and have you take a look and get the survey ready. So the survey is going to ask essentially the same questions of those drivers of change that a public meeting would. So the idea is to cover your bases in terms of if somebody can't show up to that public meeting, they can take the survey instead. So I would say in, kind of in response to Catherine's question about City of Corvallis engagement and response, that's how the City of Corvallis can, can respond and can participate. Also, if city residents wanted to go to any of those other meetings, there's nothing telling them, nothing telling anybody that they can't show up to some other meeting. You know, it's kind of, it's, it's a convenience factor, having them in different geographic locations.
But it sounded like they wouldn't be explicitly invited.
Exactly, yeah. You got it. So that's my whole spiel. I know this project is, has a lot of moving parts. Are there any other just like general questions or concerns that you want to talk through or?
I just wanted to remind us that, you know, the strategy here is to try and make sure that we bring in voices that would, that a more passive model wouldn't capture.
Yeah.
And I just think it's critically important and, you know, having been on a lot of boards in a public comment periods, it's really important. It's really easy to overvalue that input, which is probably, well, is never representative. You know, and so it's just, I want to make sure that we're intentionally thinking about how, how we're collecting and aggregating and interpreting mission, information so that we are hearing all those voices and not the loudest and the ones we're used to hearing.
Exactly. Well said.
I'm sorry, Evelyn has a comment similar. Will you have a way to distinguish city respondents from rural respondents?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that is the benefit of a survey and there, that is kind of the downside of the in-person meeting. So at an in-person meeting, we can have a sign-in sheet. For example, would have obviously your name and then we might ask them the zip code or, so it depends a lot on, I need to do some background research on what would make the most sense, but you know, address or something so that we can geographically correlate responses. The survey would do the same exact thing. So when you take the survey, one of the, kind of, it's like a demographic question that usually there comes up at the beginning or the end. And it's, would ask the same question, your address or, and you make it a required question so that you can say in the end, oh gosh, we got a ton of response and, and, you know, our outreach in this area was really effective. We got 50 people at this public meeting and 250 responded to the survey. We know exactly kind of where they all live and they're all representative of that area. So the survey would do that same thing, Evelyn, to, to ask that question. And requiring a response to it also has a downside because some people don't feel comfortable with that. But usually if you give a little explanation, they will. And you can usually have more than 50% response rate in terms of getting that answer. People generally think, kind of understand like why you're asking that.
You might consider just asking them which of these color-coded census tracts they live in rather than the specificity of a, a street address or a zip code.
For sure.
Sarah has another follow-up question. Is the IP address for the future survey available for outreach materials?
Sorry, I'm not seeing that question on here, but so the IP address, we can see through our data analytics, like our Google analytics on our website. It's not something that I would publish. Sorry, I'm not, I don't see.
It was a reference to me. I think she needs to send it to the.
Okay, that's why I don't see it, okay.
So the question, would the IP address show up on the response, the survey response? Is that your question?
Is that the question?
No, her question is, is the IP address for the future survey available for outreach materials? So I'm thinking she wants to look at materials ahead.
Oh, that's just exciting.
Is it available for outreach materials? I'm not following.
Or, or Sarah, because of the publication is so far ahead that you need to have it published well ahead of time? Is that what you're concerned about?
Oh, were you asking the website URL, not IP address?
It's, it's what the message says, IP address. And we can wait for her to, to send the response. If you stop sharing your screen, Jen, then maybe we can all see the question along the side.
If she direct messaged you, I can't see it.
So it was a question, oh, let's see. Sarah not in here, so strange. Okay, well, it was a comment directly from Sarah to me and her question was, is the IP address for the future survey available for outreach materials?
URL.
Yeah, it sounds like she's asking about URL. So it is not available yet. Yeah. It's, it doesn't even, it doesn't exist yet, so.
Yeah.
It's not available, but will be, yes.
I think she might have been bumped out of the meeting because I don't see her on the list either side now.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay.
How about we try to wrap this section? So any final questions of Shannon before we, we move on?
A quick one. As an ambassador, would you be like the facilitator, host of the meeting and then introduce the other people that would then present and drive the content?
Great question. Yeah. So my envisioning of what that ambassador role is, is yes, helping to get people there. If the ambassador feels comfortable and wants to do like an introduction, great, I'm not going to say no to that. I think it makes sense to have staff do the kind of facilitation role and for the planning commissioners to be present because it's, the whole training piece is where that starts to, I think, get a little messy in terms of getting eight people all on the same page about what you're doing. It's much easier to have two or three of us handle that, but just with help, you know? So I think as long as you all are able to, to pitch in with, you know, maybe meeting us there a little bit early, making, you know, greeting people, stuff like that, that just helps to like show your face and have some trust, community trust, recognized face, things like that will go a long way. But I, I wouldn't expect you to do facilitation.
More or less, maybe you all would introduce us and then we'd say we're in listening mode.
Yeah, yeah. I'm flexible. We can, we can figure out some of those details, but yeah.
Thank you for that. And we have, we have a, an action item to, within a couple of days to get back to you on the email that you've sent all of us. So let's see, to our, back to our agenda, we had planned to have a discussion around goal setting and priorities. I fear that the limitations of technology would simply make that a frustrating exercise. And so I think we'll kick that can down, down the road again. Into the staff updates and planning commissioner updates. Petra, planning commission vacancy.
I've put in a second formal request to have that posted. The delay revolves around the fact that that responsibility has recently shifted from the county council's office to the board of commissioners' office and they're hiring some assistants. So a little delayed in posting the many positions, but that's going to happen very soon. So that is the update on the planning commission vacancy, but they do understand that that's a major priority. So there's that. And along with it, I did put in a formal request for planning commission, board of commissioners joint session sometime within the next six months. So.
We won't hold our breath.
The recorder is also aware of that request and hopefully we'll prioritize that as well around, hopefully after the Coffin Butte situation has been adjudicated, however that's going to happen.
Yeah. Many times over. Any other community development updates?
No, I think we've done that in the two presentations, but you did have a question around the ordinances, implementing ordinances and the landfill timeframe. And so I did find those references and I sent those out in the link to your emails earlier this evening.
Thank you. Let's see. I did forward the message with respect to ex parte contacts. You probably picked up that county council was writing that with the board of commissioners in mind, but it applies to, to us as well. Any questions on that? I think it was well written and, and self-explanatory. Our next meeting, we have our meeting scheduled for March 4. We don't have any public hearings for the second half of this month. So our, our next meeting is Tuesday, March 4. And I'm still thinking about the agenda for that meeting. And so if you have topics that you would like to incorporate into that agenda, please let me know. One of the topics, I don't know how many of you are familiar with how federal kinds of public hearings go. Have you ever participated in a congressional hearing? Before a large subject, they have their rules committee define how things are going to go. So I thought we would have on our agenda for March 4th, kind of a rules committee equivalent for the Coffin Butte application. How is the, we won't talk at all about, we won't have seen anything because it won't be a matter yet. We won't have seen it and we won't talk about anything about substance. It'll all be process. How is the process going to work for us as a planning commission? Greg emailed me with a, with an excellent question, which I think is applying for this kind of a future discussion, which is we make our decisions based on land use rules. Often public testimony is broad based and, and not directly looking at a specific element of the code. How do we handle that and so forth? So a conversation around that, conversation around just the process that we'll be using during the public hearings and through deliberations. So if you have other types of agenda items for March 4th, let me know and we'll put together the agenda. Anything else for this evening? If we don't have anything else, we'll adjourn a little bit early. I apologize for the technical constraints that we had this evening. Technology is quirky. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thinking of Neighborhood Communication Group, I got a text that tells me that US budget is closed.